That was, that doesn't, it didn't require any council action. That was just a question. And then I proposed to change seven, change the order of seven A and seven B. Seven B should be a shorter discussion, so I'd like to do seven B first and then seven A. And on seven A, it's not short-term rental violations, it's code enforcement violation fines. And the code enforcement chapter, the backup material is labeled correct. The first item on the fines is code enforcement. So it's just a area over, but it actually covers all code enforcement. So if everyone's okay with that. Does anybody else have any other revisions or suggestions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Item five, letter from auditor.
It was just a letter from the auditor, the one that did the 2324 audit that we just finished. And it was just a lot of good counsel, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone had that.
Yeah, and if you read it, it's a lot of auditor legalities kind of language. It's not exactly good news. They wanted to make it clear, they didn't like the way we took care of business a couple of years ago. Because they look back further than last year, and it's related to the ARPA funds. You know, we had some one-time money. And so we agree with them. I mean, there's nothing, we have to promise we won't do that again in the future, basically, to satisfy them. So that opportunity probably won't present itself the same way anyway. And then our current, the follow-up. Our new, the new firm is working on procedures manuals, so that we can avoid the audit process. And there are similar questions. I got a questionnaire, and I'm sure Lila got a questionnaire. Anyway, one of the things we learned from the previous audit was, we hadn't, many of the duties weren't divided up. We have very small staff. And so a lot of the steps all fell to the city administrator. And that was, basically, goes with this, this letter, that you had one person that was responsible to divvy up the money, review the checks, get the bills, do the agenda items. So we've divided that up where we can. We've got somebody that does the utility billing, somebody else does the receivables. Lila makes the deposit. So you get a couple of different sets of eyes on it. So I think we've addressed that as much as we can without adding volumes, you know, simply to process payments. So anyway, for, you know, I guess, for point of clarification. And then item B is PICM extension.
Yeah, so that's the, the ruling that FEMA wanted. They wanted an ordinance regarding, basically, the flood zones and that deadline. It was supposed to be last year, and they've extended it to August 29th, and I got this July 24th, so.
So we introduced their model ordinance, and it was voted down. The coalition of mayors suggested that we might slow-roll this, because it was not advantageous to small communities on coast. We've done a little more research. Their big hammer was that you could lose flood insurance for those properties in special flood hazard areas. The only property that is entirely in flood plain is the city's property that is vacant, where the potential for that old trail, you know, to put the trail back in from West Lake to North Beach, that's basically the only parcel that's completely inundated. It also affected the repairing, 50-foot setback became 108-foot setback. That's really problematic for lots on the lakefront. And so it just sits, as far as we're concerned, it sits. And it looks like it would have a minimum impact if we didn't do anything. There's no homeowner that would lose flood insurance, because we don't have any homes built in flood plain. So for right now, it's gonna sit. And I think there is still a possible loss in Oregon. And I think it's, I'm not sure if it's League of Cities or, I think it is League of Cities that was taking up the challenge. So anyway, we'll see where that goes. And this is not a nationwide change to the flood insurance program. This is for coastal Oregon only. So anyway, take us to new business. Six A, possible adoption of resolution series 2025 number seven, amending the charter allowing alternative to signature requirement for electors. We got a comment, a legal comment. The, the language has improved, the title was one word too long. That is prescribed by the state, right? And then our legal review changed a couple of other words for clarity. We have two letters related to this. Ms. Jackson, do you want to speak to yours?
I'll read it again. I want to make sure it gets into the.
It's in the record, we all have it.
Yeah, I want people to listen to this. I want them to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Dear Dune City, I'm writing to share my concerns regarding the city's possible adoption of series number seven. The proposed legislation would allow potential candidates running for city council to pay $20 in lieu of gathering 20 signatures from fellow citizens. This ignores the intent of the city fathers and opens the door to possible bad players. The signature component of the legislation acts as a vetting tool and ensures that candidates have the ability and integrity to act as city leaders. Early in Dune City's history, citizens joked that Dune City was a city of the realtors, by the realtors, and for the realtors. A city ruled by developers could quickly and permanently destroy the city's natural beauty and environmental quality. I don't know how the city arrived at the concept of paying $20 instead of gathering signatures. Land County doesn't charge to verify signatures. Asking candidates to pay for the city's transportation cost is no more logical than asking candidates to pay for the secretary's secretarial services to process paperwork. The city should be grateful that there are citizens willing to serve on the council and committees. Lastly, $20 is not equal to the value of citizens' personal recommendations.
Thank you. We also have a letter from Holly Collins, similar comments. I want to point out, one, two, three, paragraph four. The second half of paragraph four says, "We saw a similar issue last year with the charter change to eliminate contract bid requirements, which, which was followed by a longtime videographer being replaced by a new council member. This resulted in significant delays in video availability, including video for the recent meeting." That is patently untrue. The bid requirement was for public works, projects only, to comply with state law. The videographer was only filming one meeting a month. We now broadcast both meetings and can broadcast the planning commission in any, it's not replaced by a council member. We have an elected council member that volunteered to help. No good deed goes unpunished. I appreciate your time and effort. So with that, I will get to the script, and we'll have some more discussion. For the benefit of all, I will read the resolution title into the record. A resolution of the State Council of Dune City in Lane County amending the charter allowing alternative to signature requirements for electors. Do any of the counselors have any questions or comments?
So which part of the title was too long?
The ballot title?
The ballot title.
Yeah, it had one too many words.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it the part that starts with a resolution of the city?
No, on the exhibit A, the ballot title.
Yeah, this, this page back here.
The ballot title is always different than a resolution.
Yeah, okay, I got you prescriptive about that format.
Okay.
All right. So it had one too many words, and then since the attorney was reviewing it, he suggested a couple of minor changes that he believed were for clarity, but there's no substantive changes to the, to the language.
Okay.
We just have to hear this again to approve the revised title and language, okay?
It basically just added that section, the whole section, it's fine.
Good question. I did both change. I couldn't figure out why we changed it. Anything else, Larry?
Just that the resolution that we passed this evening simply refers the matter to the voters.
Right.
Right.
Right, we don't, we're not approving the change, we're approving the, the language to go forward to the county to put on the ballot.
Right.
Chris, any comment?
No.
Susan? Melissa?
No.
Duke?
Yes, yes.
Please.
Thanks. For years, I've really been open to people to talk to me, and they do. And since the Septic was always been the big contact that I had with people living in Dune City, this is the second, this comes in second place. I've had quite a few people not liking the idea. I like the idea, send it to the voters, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
But from what I'm hearing, it may or may not, but from what I'm hearing, I don't think it'll pass.
Okay.
If that's okay, I wanted to hear what they, all the residents have to say.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just, it's, I think, what I'm hearing is the $20 in lieu of 20 people, you know, 20 signatures from citizens of Dune City. I've done it several times, it's easy to do, you know. I think it puts a bad, personally, I think it puts a little bit of a bad optics on it. So, but that's just, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think that's interesting, because it's what's prescribed in state law. And we're one of the few cities that don't have the same rules as all, pretty much all the other cities and counties do. And, and from my perspective, it was more our tiny staff's time. You know, we don't have any Dune City taxes.
Right.
So our residents don't pay to take care of general government. And so I'm really sensitive when Lila has to go drive all the way to headquarters twice. Because, you know, we verify the residents, and then they said, hey, they're not all registered voters, or their name didn't match, you know, this fellow, there's a typo, there's something. And they had to come back and get more signatures. And, and in the last election, there were only two of us out of four spots that collected the signatures. You know, we had two people by writing in votes, so it would make it, and it's either or, you know, I mean, you can do either or. You can, you don't have to pay the $20, you can collect signatures. Yeah. It's an interesting optics, maybe because it's new here. Because it's not new statewide, and it's not new in other states. I mean, most places, the problem we have is, you come in with all your forms, you don't even know if you've satisfied the requirements until it gets reviewed here, and then it gets reviewed there, and then you get some feedback. Versus, if you're in Lane County, you walk up to the counter, you pay your 25 bucks, and then you go, let me see your driver's license, does it match? You got a low blood, okay, you're good, you're done. You know you're going on the ballot.
Right.
And so I see both sides, you know.
Oh, yeah, oh, I do too. I think, I have no problem with voting yes, but push it on to the voters, who I think they should have to say.
Sure.
That I'm just saying that's what I'm getting.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
I would just add that, you said mayor, Lane County has a $10 requirement.
Is it 10?
10. Yeah, when I was a candidate for Western Lane Ambulance, $10.
I think each office is different.
It is.
Yeah, so this thing. It says it can't exceed, what is it, 250?
Right.
For the governor. And then it goes down from there.
Yeah, so next year, when I run for United States Senator from Oregon, it'll be $150.
All right.
And then if I run for Secretary of State, it's $100. And if I run for District Attorney, it's $50. But if I run for State Senator Representative, it's only $25.
Yeah, so that's all the blue signatures?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, for the governor, it's like, it's 10% of the signatures from the last general election. So for governor, you need like 60,000 signatures that'll have to be verified. So it's advantageous to pay the $250.
And I agree with Duke, in part, I'd rather talk to people about their concerns than about why they should vote for me.
And I think you can do both, because then, you know, if you, if you have the, we'll call it the easy way, right? You come in and you sign up and you pay your 20 bucks.
Yeah.
You can then go door-to-door and say, I'm gonna be on the ballot for state council.
That's fine, that's fine, I don't want, that's not the dog I'm talking about.
Last time, it took two weeks to figure out if we even got somebody on the ballot or not, you know. That was a little painful for when Lila goes, guess what, I have to do it again. I'm like, no way. It's a four-hour round trip to go down to the county and sit with the registrar of voters and drive back.
I'm also sensitive to what Geneva said, is that, you know, you could get some bad actors, but let's face the reality here.
You can get them anyway.
Duke and I were ball and told to join the council this year if I write it.
But selecting signatures, you can do the same. You can, you can hire that out.
Sure.
You don't have to report that you hired it out if you pay somebody.
Sure.
But I had a neighbor that helped, right? He's like, he used to want me on the ballot, I go, who didn't help me out?
If it works, you know, it's like.
We were the neighborhood.
The argument that you can have bad actors involved could happen anywhere.
Absolutely.
So it's like, whether or not they have to go get 20 signatures.
Right.
You know, if I had to find 20 signatures in my neighborhood, it'd be tough, because most of them are not home.
Yeah.
They're vacation homes or whatever.
Right.
I mean, I don't think I met 20, my neighbors not really tried to come door-to-door.
Right, right.
It's tough.
You gotta make a bigger circle.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, it would take me a significant amount of time to do that. So anyway, I'm sympathetic to the idea that we just give it to the voters to decide.
Right. And Rich, Olton, hello, thank you. Do you have any comments on the discussion on, so we had to change the title, it had one too many words in it.
Good.
And so the attorney pointed it out, and then he changed a couple of the words. But it's basically the same, and we just have everybody here tonight. And so we're just, if you have any concerns or.
No, I don't.
All right. And you'll be on the next ballot, so. No pressure. You know, make sure you pay your 20 bucks. Both methods work, yeah. All right. Any other comments?
So can I make a comment just on the, the $20 is really a arbitrary number. I mean, I, basically, I got, I asked other cities what they did, and I had a couple others, and one was $50. So I just basically, I picked $20. I mean, it was no other than.
And the state has a list, and it basically goes down about $20, so.
Yeah.
That's where I landed too, when I did the research. And if there's a hardship, we can figure out a scholarship program or something, if somebody wants to run the council or come up with capital, $20. Or, yeah, we'll give you a ticket. All right, if there's no other comments, if desired, I would entertain a motion to continue the matter to our next regular session to allow more time for consideration, or we can entertain a motion to amend the wording tonight of resolution series 2025 number seven as presented.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
To?
To just to prove it as written.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of moving this forward as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wait a minute, I needed to add a word to your, we need to do a new motion, Larry. It is entertain a motion to accept the wording for resolution series 2025 number seven and to adopt resolution series 2025 number seven. Someone, would that be your move? Okay. And you still want a second? All right. Okay.
It goes to the delegates altogether.
Yes, and we will take a roll call vote for the approval. Larry?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Duke?
Aye.
Thank you. So resolution series 2025 number seven is hereby adopted. Okay. No changes. All right. Thank you. Good discussion. Next item is six B, collection agency update.
Yes, so we had, I did call the collection agency regarding doing a lien on a property, and they, the collection agency will not automatically do that. So we contacted the Elkhog attorney plus our own attorney, and basically, we were told that in our contract, it doesn't say that they have to do it.
It's a, it's a can, not a shower.
Yes. So since then, we have, as of today, sent a letter to the party saying that we will be doing a lien on the property, and they have not paid by the 25th. And I did get a lien letter prepared by both attorneys, and I kind of, I kind of put them both together. And I have had that notarized, so it is ready to send out if we do not get paymentized by the 25th.
Of this one?
Of this one.
And then it'll be recorded and taken care of if they sell the property. All right, any questions, comments? There's no action required for this. Thank you. All right, item six C, road repairs.
Yes, so our code enforcement going out there, it's been noticing some areas of the city in the roads that need some attention. So I have put together, since there's about 13 of them, I'm including a parking lot here, but I didn't get pictures of it in your packet. But I have done a request for proposal, to see if we can get some proposals for making those repairs.
And it's, it's already been advertised, right? It already started, it's been posted?
It did, yes, as of yesterday. I did hear from Susan though, so there is one road that I need to check in for the subdivision, because it's indicated in my records that it is a public road, but there's a question about that, so I will check.
Yeah, is that a little whoa-ink, is that an HOAF here?
That's what she asked, but it is not, I mean, according to everything that I have, it says it's a Dune City road.
It's a public street, right? I remember Jamie talking about that, she was trying to make a deal to then maintain the whole thing, but it, it goes past the homes, and there's another piece there that was public. So we couldn't have a private street, that was the only way to reach a public street, if I remember that correctly. But anyway, that, that's a good question.
Let's wait, check.
Yeah, sure.
So I'll use a research on that one.
Okay, and it, and there's no action required for that, so I'm gonna bring up something else road related. We've gotten some correspondence from the county on Dyer, and it's similar to this, you know, is it public, is it private? We told them, they said, today, right? They had a request for proposals to do, we designed it, that today was just the middle date for Lane County. They said, we'll get somebody designing that, we hope to have it done, you know, before the rainy season starts. It's just a little piece of work. And then they wanted to be assured that we would take it over. We sent them the meeting minutes and a letter, and said, yes, we would. And then Lila said, and it would be privately maintained. And they said, we don't have anything to do with that. And we said, you're right. The residents agreed to that when they came to council. So that is, in theory, proceeding, and we got back in writing, that, you know, they, they sent a whole request for proposal, all the detailed engineering stuff, but anyway, that should be under design here ASAP. And then once the work is completed, they'll come to us for a, for a transfer of the real estate. So it's a weird one, you know, Rich knows the history. It's not even a public road, it's a piece of real estate they're gonna grant to the city with a road in it. And then all of the neighbors were reasonable to maintain. And same as you thought, Susan, Dale thought of it as a private street too, like a little whoa-ink, so. I don't think it would change the situation for them, but that's making some progress. Item six D, we've deleted, and item six E, planning assistance grant.
Jeff.
Go ahead.
So Wei, she is our representative at the BLCD. She basically sent this grant to me, saying that we should apply. It is basically for our city, our city's our size, and it's $2,000, which, as you know, we have asked them to do our planning. And right now, we have a variance application that they're working on, plus we have a lot line adjustment. And then soon, hopefully, we're also gonna have chapter 155. So we are gonna be spending some money with them, so I, I mean, it would be, I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and apply for this grant.
I agree. So this needs action, right? Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? It's up to $2,000, it's for small communities. The original history was, it was a representative from Eastern East, but they said that these are, all small cities are eligible. So there's no sure thing, but this sounds like a very opportune idea to, you know, pay some Elkhog.
Well, what I read, there was no matching funds, correct?
No, this is $2,000 for planning services.
That's why I wanted to make sure, no matching funds.
Yeah, and, and we have matching funds anyway, because we have a little budget for planning for services, if that came up.
But I wanted it to be known, with that small amount, I wanted to, you know, to clarify.
We need 100 grants just like this one.
I like it, it's one pain, it's easy to fill out. I'm like, I'm ready to go.
Any other questions or comments?
Very flexible on what we do.
Yeah, right, because we have a laundry list of planning things, and a contract with Lane Council Government to do it. So this one's really easy to administer. We'll have itemized invoices, and once we've exhausted the funds, the grant's done, and then we'll spend our own money to finish the, finish the work, so. If there's no other questions, I'd like a motion to approve staff applying for the grant.
So.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Okay, and then work session. Let's go to seven B, chapter 142, subsurface sanitation. We had the discussion, this should be the revisions we all talked about. And if everybody's good with the revisions, this is a revision to an ordinance, so this would be posted as a public hearing. You'll, you'll hear it, we'll discuss it again, but hopefully, this covers all the, I mean, they're, they're minor adjustments, so.
My only comment was, I just don't think the chart in the back is confusing, because it talks about pumping instead of inspections, and we don't have that inspection.
All right, hang on, let's go. First, page three is the first adjustment, we've got strikeout, and then one word added, person responsible. Any, any comments on there?
Nope.
Okay, page four, there were no changes. Page five, page five is where the real revisions are. And I agree, Susan, because this is where we discuss when you have to pump. And after the last meeting, Lila and I got together, so there, there is no state requirement for pumping. There's some recommendations. And, and I think it's gone from, you know, a conservative recommendation that got more conservative. So the state said five years, then it turned into three to five, and then it turned into five years, you have to do it in Dune City. This, even the recommendation, the 40%, is a recommendation. There's no, like, 41% is not a violation of state law. So it said greater than 40, that's the recommendation from the state. So we said, it's a shall if you're over 50%. So that we had something where it was a requirement. So we've given our local residents some wiggle room there, and we're, and we're basically saying you have to do it if you get over 50%. So I think that's generous, and it still has something we can enforce, because the original, the original reason this got remanded back to us was, we said we would go above and beyond what the state law said, so I wanted to make sure we had something we could point to that says, you know, we do have an enforcement requirement, and it would be, if you exceed 50%, then you shall get it done. So that's in that pumping paragraph. Yes, Larry?
So question, on the last part of paragraph C, it said. So, question, on the last part of paragraph C, it says, if a septic tank has solids accumulated, you're to have 50% of person responsible shall have the septic tank pumped by a DQ license plumber.
Oh, plumber.
Plumber.
You're right, you're right. Plumber. Typhoon.
Don't want to get the plumbers involved.
Wrong guy, right? Good catch.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments on this page?
I don't know.
Oh, and, yeah, these don't come out numbered in the revisions, the fourth page, I think. It's, uh...
Is there a number?
It's where, well, it's where the letters all change too, so it's the new letter C under 142.030, owner's responsibility, which I think is on page four, and then the section you're looking at is on five. Now, keep going.
Uh, page five.
Wait, are you in chapter 36? Keep going, we're backwards order, so it's the backup in the packet. You're in the code enforcement, there you go. Definitions. Keep going. There you go, this is where owner's responsibilities start, and this is the paragraph, we're going down that last one, it's plumber.
Did you get it, Melissa?
No.
Okay, the first, the first part of the backup is chapter 36.
It's under 142.030, with the following.
There you go, since we took the last item first. Yeah, I didn't realize that until I started looking at the backup. No. Which chapter are you in? That's code enforcement, so we took them backwards order, so here you go. This is now the first one, I think it's. Okay. So this is the new, you follow the recommendations 40, and then if you exceed 50, it becomes a shall. Plumber. Everybody good up to page five? The pumping?
I don't, I don't necessarily even change it, but we're saying you have to pump it, there's no deadline, so there's really no standard, the whole thing to do. I understand that maintaining the second is their responsibility, but we said you have to pump it.
Do you want to put a number in there?
No. I'm just saying, we have no way ever enforce this.
Well, it's something we talked about a little bit, and it's, if you're at 50% of total capacity, it's not an emergency, you know, it's not like within 30 days, so, and it, and it may cost a thousand dollars.
Yep.
So it wouldn't bother me if you said it had to be scheduled within 12 months, I mean, because there's no, there's no realistic scenario where you go from 50% to 100% in one year, unless, without changing, you know, your household, right? If you've had two people living in the house for seven years, it's gonna go from 50 to 56.
So why don't we just, why don't we just say within 12 months?
Is everybody comfortable with that? I, I'm with you, then you have something, because the staff needs something to follow up on, to say, it says 12 months, you know, we're gonna send you letters, we're gonna follow up.
12 months from what day? What, what date are we spending?
From that, when you discover you're greater than 50%, it becomes a shall within, say, 12 months.
So when you have it inspected and you're told that it's greater than 50%.
So the ongoing inspections continue to happen, but instead of this form letter, it kind of turned into a form letter, said it's a five-year inspection, you need to pump, you don't. I'm hoping you're gonna pump every 10 or 15, but you can do just an inspection, and...
I'm good with this because of the words, and the top part where it says approximately every five to seven, I take that literally, approximately, whereas your 50, shall, it's a 50% shall. That gives the owner, you've got, you know, he's in charge of it.
And I think we satisfied that previous challenge, where it said we had to be stricter than state law, we have a requirement to do something that the state doesn't require, and it's, it's at 50% of capacity, right? We're still at plenty of wiggle room there, it's not like something's gonna overflow the next day.
I think just by what we're doing as a city, we're above and beyond of any other city our size that I know, so I think we're doing that very well, going above what we need to do.
I wasn't trying to drive it towards putting it in, I'm just saying that it's not enforceable. That may be the intent, maybe we don't want to get in people's business until it's the failure.
You know, the tricky part was, the, the stuff that came back from Luba was inspections, right? That we would, because no one else required even an inspection, much, much less pumping rate, and this has turned into a pumping monster, right? And this has turned into a pump often.
Yeah.
So that's a good point, I mean, the state ultimately has jurisdiction, and they had no such requirement, that's why we quoted it. State recommends 40, and Dune City was gonna be stricter and say you gotta do it at 50, but I'm okay either way, I'm with you, it doesn't have a, I mean, it says you shall.
Yeah, and we don't really care until it fails.
Well, and, yeah, we care right up till the day before it fails.
But we should be, the homeowner should be responsible.
They are, ultimately, it's private property, and if it backs up or overflows, it's the state that hammers them, and the county, the county does the inspection, so both of them can find them.
Yeah.
Now, to further, I don't know, so, another tidbit, our code enforcement employee said, I'll go take the class, so we may have a city inspector, they won't be free, but you'll now have the choice, go hire anybody you want that's on the state's list, or the city employee, and it'll be, you know, actual cost plus 10% or whatever to, to take care of all the, the time and materials, and it will just be inspections. No maintenance, no pumping, we're not gonna buy a stock truck or anything, we're just gonna have, so that it's completely separated from the people that pump them, and I think that will help a lot too, because you'll get, you'll get just an inspection, and you can always go get a second opinion, if you don't like it, then, you know, you can call Brown, Trout, or whoever you want, and get a second opinion, and if you need to pump it, you're on your own anyway, and it is private property, and it is your responsibility.
I think the way this is written down, just a few word changes, puts the power back into people's hands.
It makes it clear it's their responsibility.
Totally, the responsibility is, it always should be, and it is, I mean, it is.
It is, absolutely.
Had your own home for a while, the septic system in a lot of ways will talk to you. You know, if you're getting, if you're over, say, 50%, things are gonna start happening, and you're gonna start noticing that you need to pay attention to your septic system.
It rolls downhill a bit.
For much.
Stop going downhill, and then you see it in the shower.
So, so no date?
Okay, I'm fine.
You're good with that.
All right.
Because I think that opens a net of tea in the words.
In more office, or more office type, that they have to work.
Yeah, it is, right, because then it becomes, then now what are you gonna do about it? And the last one, we thought we had to do something about it, called the county, and they go, eh, the system doesn't look that bad, it looks like he's upgraded, he didn't tell anybody.
Yeah.
You can't win, you know? We thought we were doing the right thing, and the homeowner already did something, and didn't tell us or the county, but when the county inspected, they're like, we have no concerns, like, okay, and we'll let it ride. And it was a lot of effort, right? I mean, it was a lot of back and forth just to get to that point, so ultimately, it ends up being the owner's responsibility, and if they choose not to pump it and their system fails, then it's on them to replace the system.
And they can pay out several thousands of dollars.
They can be fined as well.
If it overflows, anything escapes, yeah.
So. I, I think we're covered. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so there's a couple of words, there's nothing that changed on six, and then there's some words on seven. But I think I agree with this, that's where we talk about at least five years from last for an inspection. So we're trying to get out of that prescriptive, you gotta do it in five years, it's five to seven, and I'm with you, you know, if you've lived there for a few years, and it's the same number of people doing the same thing, it's not gonna change quickly, you're gonna have a really good idea after.
I, I thought this was gonna go on where the, the person doing the inspection would actually indicate whether it's gonna be five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever the case would be, according to...
Based on use.
Right, based on use, not in a five-year period, so if we put five years, that's still putting us at a mandate, you'll have it inspected in five years.
It says approximately.
No, but back here on this one, I'm sure you see a couple more.
More.
Oh wait, they don't care. It only goes to five.
Okay, well, yeah, well, it's kind of, it said five to seven.
It needs to correlate toward the other one.
Yeah, five to seven, and it says approximately, so.
Can we make them the same?
I mean, I think my mistake. He says at least five years from the last.
And this was just our notices, so basically, what, how I meant it is that you would start sending a notice until five years.
So it's just a reminder notice?
Yes.
Right, 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 that's not a shall, because the...
Because right now, she sends them three months before, then she sends them when it's due, and then she sends them three months after, you know what I mean? It was, the first one wasn't gonna come until five years.
It was a shall, right at five years, it said you shall, and, yeah, we weren't, that's what started this, we weren't enforcing our own ordinance correctly, we were, we were going way above them.
I can tell you from experience, they send quite a few of them, then they actually come to your house and deliver it by hand. I know.
Well, you were...
I'm a problem child.
I think you were one of those on the personally known list, that's how to go with it.
I think so.
And then I think the next page is all strikeouts. And then the last page, I agree with you, Susan, we, we went back and forth, the weather we, the table was for reference on expected life for pumping. But if you're doing your inspections, yeah, you really don't...
Because we talk about...
Because for everybody else, they don't have to do an inspection, they just look at this table and go, ah, we should be able to go to 12 years, or five years, or nine years, or whatever.
But even the table doesn't tell you, it depends on your household, it depends on your solids.
It does.
So the 50%, I think says it better.
It does, so we can strike this whole thing, we went back and forth, like, take it out, put it in.
Well, don't you think this is a helpful table?
It is, but we're, we're duplicating something that exists somewhere else anyway, you know, so that...
I know that, but I mean, it's like, if you said to me, what's 40% or 50%, or if you said, you know, there's two of us living here, how long would it last for my size tank?
I agree.
I think what you could do is you could leave the table in and just say, you know, this is just for reference only, and it's kind of like your rearview mirror, objects may be closer. And this is just, this is just information only, this is not a criteria we should, you know?
But it confused a lot of our residents, that's why I wanted to take it out, because many got confused.
Well, the old one, we had the inspection requirement, and then we put this chart, and the chart was a pumping estimate, not, and that's what was really confusing. So now that we've changed the language for inspections, I said the same, just put it there as a reference, so if somebody goes, 40% of what? You know, then you can look at this and go, ah, well, it's just us two, we should get 12 years, so 40% is gonna happen around year five or six.
Maybe to further explain that, maybe where it says estimated septic tank pumping frequency in years, maybe make that font bigger, or change it up there that way it's just a...
Yeah, we, we duplicated that exactly as it exists, but we could put, or just add at the end for your reference only, or something for, for your information.
And this, maybe something that doesn't say that this table is, is not mandatory.
Right, this isn't prescribed.
It's just educational purposes only.
There you go.
Maybe a basis.
For reference only, it's not, it's not limiting or restricting.
And it is, it was referenced in the Luba stuff that, you know, follow this, this chart from the university, so it gets referenced in state law, and, and so, I thought, yeah, as a reference document, but you're right, if you don't know all that history, I don't want it to be confusing either, so we can add a sentence there and say...
You know what you're doing, you're just saving people from having to Google this.
Right, from both of them.
Well, if there's two of us, we live here, we're full time.
I'd rather just have it as a reference and say, check the Oregon State University Extend Conservative Day, and make them move it up, but, and it's not to be mean, it's so they do their homework.
Yeah.
But then we're also following back, half of our citizens don't use the computer, they don't use a phone, and, you know, they're...
I like the idea of putting it here.
Okay, well, we can add a sentence there.
Information only. For information only, previous studies recommend this.
In the title, where it says Oregon State University, we'll put, you know, for reference on, for, yeah, for your information.
I think that needs to be first, not the name of it.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, we had that right at the top.
I like that.
Okay, that'll help.
Because people get confused with this, every person that I've talked to...
This whole topic is...
Is...
And we're the only, I mean, everybody we've asked, they go, you're the only city in the building. Like, I can believe that, I mean, unless the homeowner's a contractor or keenly interested in septic operation, or the council who's had this discussion, you know, every other month for the last year, no one else wants to talk about it.
For the last 15 years.
Our senior husband talks about it continually.
This is a...
We started off at about the same place a couple months ago on this issue, and we talked about this for 10 years, and the council arguing back and forth, but I think that the big, what was confusing people was the inspection part of it, that we were being told a true inspection is only to be done after the thing's pumped, and you check for cracks and stuff like that, not just for solid inspection.
Right, the one's the inspection, the other one's like for real estate transfer, where you're...
Our pumping needs to be based on the amount of solids in your septic, and if we run it from 40 to say 50%, that's what you're basing on, that puts it back into homeowners and your usage, if it's a holiday home, a vacation home, whatever it may be.
Right.
I think this works.
Okay, very good. So if everybody's good with this with these little adjustments, then you'll get to see this at least one more time, we'll advertise it as a public hearing, and then invite everybody else that's interested in coming, and we'll, we'll take additional comments. And we've got Mike Rowe coming to the next meeting, this will be on Dirty Dollars.
Hey, if he wants to come start open service, I'm pretty sure he'll get a kick out of that, it'll be on television.
He's rich for this kind of stuff. All right, thank you so much. So, we need action, so I guess we need a motion to approve with minor revisions, so that we can vote this to public hearing, or something like that, anybody want to make...
I think the R should be...
I'd make a motion. I was thinking the same thing. Be careful with this.
Okay, two motions to do this one more time on a public hearing with minor revisions. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you. All of those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, that takes us to seven A, the code enforcement violation fines in Chapter 36 Code Enforcement. So we've been through Chapter 36, I think this is all of the proposed language changes. Let's start with the fee schedule. So we had this conversation better than a year ago, so two of the council haven't seen this, and I guess we didn't follow through. So this was a, this was basically, while we were all going back and forth, this was one of the previous councilmen saying, you know, here's my first wag at it, and the first item is failure to have a short-term rental permit. That number, the $1,500 first occurrence, is the same price as an application and a license, so there would be no incentive to cheat, you're not gonna get fined. there would be no incentive to cheat, you're not gonna get fined a hundred dollars for not applying and getting the permit, which, in theory, costs fifteen hundred dollars. So, if somebody's doing it and is, is found guilty, the fine is gonna be the same thing, and, um, so, and then there was a, basically a fifty percent increase if they had another occurrence, and then, and so on, and so on. So, those are pretty big numbers, the rest of these, we never really had a complete discussion about, but that one made sense to me, that the fifteen hundred is basically what all short-term rentals have spent to get properly permitted and, and, uh, you know, in operation. My personal opinion is the second one is too expensive.
What, the second fine?
No, the second item.
No, I'd look away as an illegal vehicle, that's what I was just.
It's really illegal parking, we don't have upstream parking, and that was, that was one of the big complaints that mostly came with short-term rentals. And the new ordinance says your occupancy level and your parking, um, your occupancy level's part driven by the capacity of your septic system, and then your parking has to be onsite, period, doesn't matter how many bedrooms you have, they all gotta fit the driveway. And so, I can't think of any community in America where a parking ticket's five hundred dollars on a first occurrence. That's gonna be pretty hard to justify.
Can I go back to the first room and ask a question? Sorry, to me, it's not clear.
Of course.
The, if these are fines, if the fifteen hundred is a first occurrence, is that a fine, and they still have to get their permit?
Yes, so, so if there was room for a permit, right, because once we get to thirty-five, we're not taking any.
I, I got that, I'm just saying.
So, yeah, so they need to get permitted if they continue to rent.
So, it would be really three thousand dollars, because fifteen hundred dollars plus fifteen hundred dollars.
Separately, they would have to come in.
That's what I, I wanna clarify.
Right, so the fine's not three thousand.
This is just the fine.
It's fifteen hundred dollar fine.
And then they pay the.
And then if they said, oh, sorry, we'll never do that again, it's done, and if they say, what do I gotta do to get permitted? It's another fifteen hundred, well, it's a five hundred dollar application that gets reviewed, if that passes, then it's a thousand dollars for the.
I just wanted that put on the table, so we have that clear.
Yes.
That's, uh, doesn't cover that.
Completely separate from the fine, exactly, it doesn't waive anything. And there's, we wanted to make sure there was no incentive to not get the permit, because it's a two hundred dollar fine, and it saves you thirteen hundred bucks, you know what I mean? It's, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the fine, we didn't want that to be that situation.
Perhaps we should change the word instead of saying permit fee schedule.
Oh, you're right, that's fine, yeah, sorry, that, that doesn't belong there at all, it's just code enforcement violations, yeah, it's not permit fee schedule.
So, I'm curious, it's fifteen hundred, and you had seven hundred and fifty bucks to get to twenty-two fifty, then you go to thirty-three seventy-five? Uh, what is that, just like eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars more?
I'm not sure.
I'm, it's curious to me that it's thirty.
It was fifty percent on fifty percent.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Oh, fifty percent of twenty-two fifty added on.
I get you.
There you go, that's what it was, it was fifty percent increase each time, yeah.
Okay, so the illegal vehicle on the road, if somebody's riding their motorcycle and it's not registered?
No, this was really about parking.
Okay.
Because we, we don't have a law enforcement, we can't do moving violations on the road, this would be for parking, so we should change the title. This was the first rap, I mean, it's first time this has been reviewed by council, so, um, it should be really illegal parking on the road, on public driveways. So, it doesn't matter if it's a car, truck, trailer, licensed, run license, if it's blocking the right of way, uh, you could be cited, and if someone appealed, I don't know how we would justify five hundred dollars for, for.
Could, could we match the trespassing fines instead? I mean, you've got two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty for that noise ordinance, you've got a lot of these there, two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, I'm just saying, match those.
I still think that's outrageous for parking, but, I guess the other part that has to go with this, and staff would appreciate guidance. So, when you read through, it's not simply a complaint, you know, I saw a car, they stopped, fine them two hundred and fifty, or five hundred, or fifty, or whatever it is, because we're not chasing down the mailman, the UPS, you know, your neighbor who stops to deliver something, whatever. Uh, this is about somebody parked, whether it's a renter or a resident, and left something blocking the right of way, you know, for two nights or whatever, it's become a problem. And then it's up to code enforcement to say, you know, I have evidence, I got a picture, I went out there, it was still there, I told them to move it, they did, then they get cited, so.
How about a burned-out RV?
Working on that, I'm a different product. But that's a good question, right, if you break down in the right of way, you, you have to have sufficient time to remedy, you either gotta wait for a tow truck, or, in that case, he's waiting for the insurance company, we've got all the info, and it's still a work in progress, but.
He's got a new RV now.
Does he?
Oh, yeah.
Come on now, I mean, it's, we shouldn't be waiting for the dumb insurance company, we should haul that sucker off and charge the insurance company.
Well, we, I don't think we can haul it out.
Yeah, we can, we're a city.
Well, we can, we can tow it out of the right of way.
We can tow it out of here and charge the insurance company, they're just not getting around to it.
Well, we just got the insurance info this week.
I know, but still, the insurance adjusters are gonna sit on their hands on this.
They might, I know, so, we're working towards that.
Yeah, I don't think you go after the insurance company, you have to go off, after the owner of the burn, you can't do the insurance.
Yeah, we can file a complaint directly.
A complaint, not a claim.
No, no, but a claim, not a ticket, but a claim.
Yeah. But this illegal parking came after when we had the short-term rentals that were parking in.
Right.
The roads that were shared right, or shared driveways.
And we couldn't turn around, you couldn't get a ride truck, right, that, that was the concern.
That was the concern for us.
Right.
The reason I brought up the two fifty is because, let's say I have an Airbnb next door, which I do, and somebody parks in my driveway instead of parking on the street where they know they're gonna get fined, they're still trespassing.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, make it same as trespass, and.
Hopefully, this never happens.
Right, the rest of the two fifties.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. So, two hundred, five hundred, seven fifty.
Yeah. Guess basically just a flag violation across the board.
Well, that helps staff too, right, they're consistent, and they're straightforward, and, um, and we're probably gonna write some sort of operations manual. It doesn't have to be in the ordinance or described in the fee schedule, but, you know, I grow wants to be consistent, so we're gonna start writing this stuff down like, you know, we had a noise complaint, and they had a Ring doorbell camera, and you could hear it, they recorded it. And, uh, I don't know, it was nine o'clock at night?
Yeah.
So, it was right while we were adopting these changes, and technically, quiet was seven o'clock at the time. And they called the management company, and immediately got quiet, you know, it sold in five minutes. So, nobody was cited, they were, they were given a heads up, they fixed it. And so, that comes back, the resident complains, like, aren't they gonna get cited and shut down, and it's like, they made a noise for five minutes, and as soon as you said, hey, I can hear you across the street, they turned it down, so, so, what we really want is compliance, not their money, we want them to say, sure, we had a happy vacation here, and, you know, we don't wanna violate it, and so, so, we're, ultimately, we're trying to write all this stuff down, you know, how, you know, what's a reasonable amount of time to respond and enforce? Go ahead, let's see that question.
I think you could call a noise or, or should I say, failure in compliance with noise, so? Do we wanna put fail off based off just what we were talking about?
Actually, violate noise ordinance, right, which, it's actually, all these are in title thirty-six now, so, they're all in the code enforcement chapter. So, yeah, we should be consistent in the titles, it's violation of noise ordinance.
Yeah.
And same, violation of, well, it's really parking in the right of way.
Or, or more badly.
Yeah.
Now, that was in the right of way, I differentiate between right of way and what you talked about, the shared driveway.
That would be trespassing, so, this one, the first one is, we don't have parking in the right of way, in the streets. The second would be if you're on shared driveway or private property, that's trespass, that's not the right, so we differentiated between the two, the name. And, cuz we did have complaints for both, and one was like, they parked in my driveway versus they parked in the little skinny, let's the street cross the street from me.
That's neither, no?
No, on the other side of Clear Lake, there's short-term rental, and a year ago, they kept parking a truck and a trailer, people would come and park a truck and a trailer, and it's a little skinny, like, twelve-foot ride road, and they said, we can't get a fire truck down the street and turn around. And, um, uh, they would encroach in somebody's driveway, you know, so.
The worst I seen was before we started controlling the short-term rentals was on, I hope it's not there anymore, but been on Buckskin Bob. And I don't even know if those are still active, rentals are on, but it was bad down there.
Yeah.
It was plugged in the pavement.
One of them was sold, and, um, I know when you get towards the end, there's a big wide spot, and they would always park there. And then we looked at that house, and like, that, the house has a hundred and twenty-foot-long driveway, why are they parking down the road, they got plenty of, plenty of space on the side.
I looked at it a couple times, and there, RV trailers and that kind of stuff is what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't had any complaints about that lately, one of them sold, but the new owner did apply for a short-term rental permit, right?
Yeah, so we have another one for sale on Buckskin Bob, that, that, that new owner has not applied yet.
Okay, I hope they did that.
And the new owner, uh, upon application can assume the license from the existing.
No, you don't assume, you got a window to, to.
To perpetuate that, right, right, but if you don't do it in that thirty days.
During closing.
During the sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, during the sale, they have the right.
Yes.
To assume that license upon application.
They have to apply themselves.
You can't assume the other license.
Right, you apply yourself, but the septic and all the inspection stuff's up to date.
Yeah.
So, it's a, it's a quicker process, so.
Yeah.
They did, right, that was the one that was advertised for a million bucks, and they applied when it was during closing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not an automatic, but it's quicker if you do that. At some point, I mean, what are we up to, thirty-three now?
We were at thirty-four, but with that one, we might be down to thirty-three, if, if that owner does not apply.
So, once there's thirty-five, if you didn't do it in that window, you go to the back of the line.
Yeah.
You know, and there may not be any rental permits available. Looks like we picked the right number, because we're, we haven't eliminated anybody, and the number hasn't bloomed, it's, you know, we're creeping up to thirty-five.
The, uh, the last one there, cutting down a tree without a permit?
Yep.
It, it doesn't fit the rest of these, um, and these are all violations of code, versus that's just not having a permit. What about excavation without a permit?
That one's code too, though, and we need to be more specific, this is in the repairing habitat only, and that's.
Oh, okay.
So, that's the one we have to regulate of state law, and then it trickles out of us, so it's that fifty foot from normal high watermark, that's all we have to patrol. So, you can cut a tree outside of that, you're free to cut a tree outside of that.
But don't you still need a permit to just go out and cut a tree down?
No, only, we have to inspect stuff in the repairing habitat.
Right, I, I.
So, if it gets flagged as diseased or dead already, it doesn't count.
Yeah, you have exceptions for safety and all that, um, within repairing zone.
Yep.
Okay, I thought you still had to have a permit for putting down trees, like, you do for excavation.
Unless you're gonna show it as a law.
I, cool, so then, yeah, it's not just cutting down a tree.
Right, so this, we put all permit tech, they really should say in repairing habitat, and, and that usually generates a phone call anyway, cuz you gotta look at the pictures and, um.
And I was wondering, is that really two fifty, cutting down a tree in that area, equivalent to some of these others?
What's the permit cost for a tree? Cheap.
Yeah, um, I know that we did charge somebody two fifty, that's how I put it.
Couple of our neighbors do, have been cutting trees in the repairing area, and, Pam has been quick to respond, you are to respond, and take care of that issue.
I think if it's kind of down in a repairing habitat, the cost of a fee should be higher.
I think that's true.
Because you have to put back to restore. We were just sort of talking about that with the previous issue.
Right, and the, that FEMA regs, the proposal, if it's a hundred and eighty feet, it also has like, if this is a habitat, it's three to one, you cut one tree, you gotta plant three.
We need.
And, but that, you know, I mean, that's sort of the good part that could come out of that for us, but, you know, we haven't adopted any of that, but I, I agree with you, a tree is a bigger one. If you ask an arborist, they'll say, a mature tree, you know, the value from shade, habitat, oxygen, and all that, they're, they'll say it's twelve thousand dollars. You know, they give you a really big number for a mature tree.
Cuz if they cut down ten trees, then they'd still be fined less than seventy-five hundred dollars. And, to me, in a repairing area, it's a big deal to cut down.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, I'm fine if that's a bigger number in a repairing.
This right here is gonna, well, I'll just cut it down, pay a little, so I'll have a hand fee.
Well, that's what the last guy said.
What do you got, what number do you guys want?
That's something that follows student city is, I'll do it, and then I'll ask for forgiveness.
Well, pick a bigger number.
I, I don't know if I knew the whole, but we're talking about a repairing area. So, we need to, I'm assuming there are rules in regards to the, like, if we, if we had, like, we were gonna reach outsourced to the watershed to review the one repairing area, how did they come up with those numbers in order to restore that? Where did they get those numbers from?
The price or the number of plants, which number?
The plants, or the, the number, or the cost of the restoration of the repairing, how do they come up with that total?
Well, there's some prescriptive stuff, you have to plant things that are native in that, you know, so they basically give you a list to say, there's six shrubs, and four saplings, and these, you got to put, problem is, you're putting a sapling back, you can buy a twelve-dollar sapling to replace a, you know, a ninety-foot-tall mature tree.
So, how are we, how are we qualified to put a, the cost on that, I don't know, maybe that's opening up for.
I think you're putting a number here to discourage it, right, so, yeah, it should be a bigger number, I mean, wouldn't bother me if it was fifteen hundred dollars for a tree in a repairing.
I don't wanna make that call on what it, it has to be something where, I'll put it together.
Yeah.
I don't have a number to begin with, I'm.
Right, but I agree, we wanna discourage that in a bigger way.
I just thought two fifty was kind of low.
It is, I agree.
How about a thousand dollars?
Okay, anybody else? Anybody wanna bid?
Well, I think it's a thousand dollars, uh, first violation, go from there, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand.
Okay.
And it's per tree.
Within.
In the repairing.
In the hundred and eighty feet, right?
No, I'm saying within six months, a year.
Well, they're doing it all at the same time, so.
Oh, like second offense.
If you charge them a thousand dollars, they're gonna cut all the trees down for a thousand bucks.
No, no, but I cut a tree down this, this summer, and the next summer, I cut down another one. I know damn well that I'm not supposed to, cuz you charged me last year for it, but it's.
We just went through that scenario.
I think it should be each offense.
Forever.
I think it should be a thousand dollars a tree.
Yeah, each tree that gets cut down should be that amount.
So, like the one you saw the other day, three trees on the same day.
Yeah.
So, it was all one offense.
Right.
The previous one was appealed counsel, it was a number of trees was the first offense, and then, after having a two-hour-long discussion, and I thought everybody understood, it happened again. It was clearly a second offense, because I talked to him personally on the phone, and he said, well, yeah, I looked out the window, and it was diseased, so I had to cut it down immediately. Did you take a picture, get a permit, it's a walk-away permit for a diseased tree, I didn't have time for that.
Again, it falls along with what student city has.
That was clearly a second.
I'm gonna go ahead and do it, and then.
I was trying to say along with him, is it, it's a thousand dollars per tree.
And that second tree was five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because it was egregious, and it was a second offense, so, I, I'm with you, I think a thousand dollars per tree for the first offense, and then, like.
My, my question is, what's the window of the first offense?
Make it a year.
A year?
Lifetimes.
Lifetime of the property owner?
The age of the tree, hundred and seventy-five years, twenty-five years, I don't know, that's no.
I, I agree that definitely per tree needs to be factored in, cuz I can't just clear-cut into that, no, it's one offense, one tree.
Right.
Well, I think if any type, period of time goes between it, just like with the other gentleman, he did it within, uh, a week, and then, a couple of months later, he did it again, to me, that was a second offense.
Right.
So, how about this, how about a thousand dollars a tree, first offense, and then, second offense, you're talking five thousand a tree.
Say within twelve months, or twenty-four months, or.
Right.
Okay, I think it needs to be at least multiple years.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, you can say five.
Twenty, let's say twenty-four months.
Or, the next time your septic tanks pump. That'd be very memorable.
Within one second.
Seven years could be seven years. But, yeah, no, I agree with you.
What year for me?
If you, I mean, we got people who live in the same house for twenty-five years, I mean, you know the rule, right, and so.
But if you put a second offense and put like twelve months, then how many are they gonna cut down within that twelve months?
Just wait till the next year.
Yeah, they'll still be paying, have to cut a tree. Yeah, they'll still be paying, have to cut a tree.
I know they'll have to pay for it. I'm just saying, there's people that are gonna figure out the math.
Right, so.
Out of curiosity, what was the county pop, uh, do with this? I know that when we had the.
I don't know.
Property done, we had to pay a substantial amount of money to have trees removed and they had to be checked on first.
Yeah, that's the idea, right. You're supposed to, you're supposed to identify them and say that's unhealthy. I don't even know.
I, that should be looked at.
So yeah, this one's an oddball. It's state law that you can't do any of this stuff in the repairing habitat and then it trickles down to like, on the previous appeal, I called the state and I go, what do you guys think? And they go, ah, we only care about how much dirt they move, you know, in the room. Doesn't sound like it was that much. He didn't want to be involved.
Well, it's the same thing like Chris said. Is this just tree or is this talking about excavation too? We had that recently.
Well, this one's, this one's.
But we should probably have something about an excavation.
Yeah, we should. And actually, any work in the repairing. Cause that's a big, well, it'd be another line. Grading, illegal grading in repairing because that is a trigger.
That affects somebody else's.
Is a, is a state law and so, yeah, that's, because that can be permitted. But it requires you come and apply and get a review. So yeah, we should add that to the list.
Basically, what you're saying is every time I wanna add gravel, I gotta come down here and get a permit because.
I think it should be like remove dirt. The excavation would be removing dirt.
No, it was, if you were filling something in rather than. You're doing it as part of my degree, but you already have.
But that's removal.
Same, a lot of times, all, all bring in ten truckloads.
Okay. But it's already an area that's gravel. Okay.
You're just grading the area.
But I think you're okay. That's covered. Even on a proposed FEMA one said, routine maintenance was allowed.
Yeah.
You know, if you had something.
If you decided to fill into the lake twenty feet horizontal and build it up six feet, that would be something that's gotta be permitted.
Yeah, so like if you brought in ten truckloads of beach sand to make a beach there and dumped it in the water, that's the repairing zone.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be damaging the water and the, the lakefront with arguably sand that's from the beach.
Yeah.
So it had a lot of, you know, things in it that are not native to the lake. But not, not your parking lot. I, I gotta park somewhere when I come over to eat, so.
Yeah, we're all.
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify because.
No, that's a good point.
You know, I mean, I've got, I've got a, a seawall.
Right.
And if I don't remove that seawall and I put a seawall right behind it, what have I disturbed?
Potentially nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, so eventually my seawall is gonna give way because it's, it's a rubber type, it's an old rubber structure. And so eventually, I'm gonna put one right behind it, which I'm gonna end up losing about two feet of property.
Right.
But no, you'll still own it.
But it's not, it's not a fine if you, yeah, you can still get permitted. You can get permitted to do that. This is a fine if you don't get permitted to do it.
Why should I have to have a permit to put a seawall down?
I don't know.
Being there's one already existing, I put one right behind it, it's new.
I think we, we do permits for retaining walls, but not fences, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
We have rules for fences.
Seawall means a plan review. It just, it needs a plan and a permit. But that's permissible. And then this doesn't apply if you go through, if you pull.
Yeah, we don't wanna find that situ, that situation where you're maintaining what you already have.
Yeah, and that's even a great area.
That house you did, you're allowed to maintain what you have existing.
Right.
Whether, whether or not it's.
In one green, you see a bridge in the repairing place.
What's that?
You could just repair your wall and.
You wanna take a two minute recess? He's cleaning up or I'm loading?
Well, he's just.
Oh, wow.
He's just moving it over.
Only, that's all it's done. It's just moved over. But that's his new RV that's right there.
The structure right there, like if you have, just certainly see the piece of your dog. Yeah, people in there explaining, you're just replacing.
Repair, yeah, yeah, usually like for like, there's a lot of stuff that's exactly.
We're talking about the guy who grades off the hill into the water to give himself a big playground for his kids or something.
My dad goes out and talks to.
For the family that brings several truckloads of sand down to create a beach where there isn't one, that kind of stuff.
I mean, I spotted, found trails.
Work for three weeks at a time. At least he has a routine that sits down there.
Some people have.
Yeah.
There needs to be a fine for disrupting the repairing zone, but.
Yeah, so I would add an item grading in a repairing habitat without a permit is a separate one.
And the, the tree thing isn't just trees, it's plants.
Right.
Just any vegetation.
Right, tree slash vegetation removal, yeah. So make the, cutting down a tree or vegetation removal without a permit in repairing habitat, thousand dollars first occurrence or a thousand dollars per tree?
What about a bush?
I don't know. If there were no trees, wouldn't it be a thousand dollars?
They're saying you're helping about vegetation, so that may not be a tree.
Right, so. So you're.
Thousand per tree or a thousand for vegetation removal? You, you're gonna charge a person a thousand dollars for a piece of vegetation that's buried right in my painting in this tall?
You betcha. If it's in the repairing habitat, they don't get a permit.
Perhaps it should just be a blanket of.
Well, generally the landscapers, they say four inch, they say if it's got a four inch trunk or grader, that's what they look at. So like, you know, if you have a volunteer tree that's growing and you sniff it off and it's an inch trunk, that's not how it counts.
It also.
Four inch trunk, that's.
Cutting down a tree versus cutting brush, you can cut brush, you can't remove it.
Correct.
So yeah, they, we're getting into some, some details there.
I believe it's so high that it.
Right, so you can thin it out and whack it off at the waterline seasonally because it'll grow back, but you can't cut a pine tree at a two foot stump and expect it to bounce back, you know, like you do a.
That, that's kind of what I'm getting at because I'm gonna vote no on this. If we're gonna go that route.
I think the issue is we're, we're trying to redefine what the repairing zone rules already are and that's not what we're trying to do.
No, exactly. We're trying to put a fine on if you violate.
If you violate their repairing zone.
Right.
Then we maybe just call it like a violation of a repairing.
And then it's a thousand dollars first offense and we'll leave that to.
This is just.
Code enforcement to figure out whether it rises to that level or not. Not like we can describe it in a tiny box.
We're incentivizing them to come see.
Yes.
Eor and Pam.
Absolutely.
And hire, hire an arborist and decide if the tree needs to come out or not.
Right.
It's that simple.
Right.
Yeah.
So. And if you just want to walk away, I mean, that's an instant, you know, if you've got pictures or an arborist says, I got a diseased tree, we don't deny them.
You, you're telling me I gotta go hire an arborist to come down there and look at a tree? If you're.
Repairing dying, absolutely.
At third of the city that is dying.
So two neighbors across the lake from me in the last few months have cut down four or five trees that are perfectly healthy.
I'm, I'm not saying perfectly healthy. I'm saying I'm gonna have to hire an arborist.
They should have to hire an arborist.
To come and look and say that that tree that, and, and I planted it, is dying and you can tell it is dying.
Well, if you can tell it, then Pam can probably tell it.
Yeah, Pam would be dying.
But I'm talking about, I was over there talking to these neighbors and the trees were being dropped up into the wood chipper and they were perfectly healthy trees. This was just so they can improve their view.
I, I think this is the result of previous incident where we had nothing to point to. Like what was the fine structure we should be looking at?
Yeah.
I get it, but I don't. I, I think.
Well, the violation's there, so we can't just turn a blind eye. Well, we're a city. It trickles down to us.
We, we had a structure here. Now we're redoing the structure and making it just for trees.
So astronomical that. Well, this is a fine, Rich, this isn't a permit. If you don't, if you get a permit or you come in and apply first, none of it applies. It's not a thousand dollars to get a permit. It's like fifteen dollars, right, for a diseased tree. So if you pull a permit, you avoid all this. That's easy. If it's a diseased tree, it's easy.
But then you gotta hire an arborist. Do you know how much an arborist costs?
You can hire an arborist right here in town.
Yeah, I tried, really.
There's, there's people that you can hire in Lowell Bay, they'll come over and look at a tree. You can call Les Wells, they'll come over, look at your tree, they'll tell you what's the issue.
But I, I would love to know the name of that arborist because I've called several of them and none. The only one I've found is one out of Yapha's.
I'm not saying you have to hire somebody, but let's say Pam went out there and she looks at, the tree looks pretty dang healthy. What if you go out there and it's pretty dang healthy and the guy goes, no, it's diseased. All right, you hire an arborist and prove to me that that doesn't look like every other tree in the forest that looks healthy. Prove your case. That's what you do in a permit process. But the people that are cutting trees are figuring, hey, you have to find only two hundred and fifty bucks. It's like, I'll cut now and ask forgiveness later.
That's what it's gonna be.
I'll claim the tree that I already chipped up and hauled off was diseased because there's no evidence left. So that's what's happening.
Yeah.
To improve a view plane, which ruins my view plane because I'm across the lake looking at big bear spots now, just so their house can see the water.
And remember, it's only in the repairing habitat. It's not everywhere.
Yeah.
And that's the stuff that's regulated by the state. We're expected to enforce. So we're down to a price tag for tree cutting or vegetation removal.
Or is it repairing zone violation?
In the repairing habitat, yeah. Well, that's a good point. Do you say, do you say repairing violations? Okay, cause I had these two items. One, one's grading or fill and the other was vegetation. But they're all in that. I mean, they're all in the state law and I don't wanna know where I got a tree. In our repairing habitat stuff.
Mary, if, if it's an excavation fine of a thousand dollars, that's different than an ec, than a tree for a thousand. If you've got five trees, that's five thousand dollars. If you dig a big ditch, that's not gonna get from one thousand to five thousand.
Well, and their violation is fifty cubic yards of fill in the repairing habitat or wetland. So it's really specific.
Right.
It's gotta be greater than fifty yards of fill.
Right, so if you just say a thousand dollars, that's not gonna get it done for those trees.
So they can do their whole lot and only get fined a thousand dollars.
But their whole lot won't be in the repairing habitat. You can't build a house.
That's what Larry's getting at, is they could clear the whole repairing area and we don't apply a thousand.
Yeah, exactly. So there's a number of trees and there's one excavation. So if you just say a thousand dollars for a fine in the repairing, that's not enough. It's gotta be a thousand dollars per tree in the repairing.
Okay, that's how I wrote it down.
Yeah.
One's grading. And the other is the vegetation and trees.
And we're trying to incentivize them to come see the city. That's the idea. We're not trying to collect money this way. We want to keep the trees that we can keep.
Have compliance.
Yeah, we don't need the money, we need the trees.
The fine process and the appeal process.
It's too hard to get the trees back.
Right.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Anyway, I'll make a motion that we do a thousand dollars per tree, five thousand for the second offense per tree and a thousand dollars for the repairing excavation.
And do we wanna put a time frame?
Twenty-four months.
Okay, you said for grading a thousand, so no matter what they do, it's a thousand?
Well, if it's more than the fifty cubic yards, then that becomes a, a bigger problem, right?
No, that's where it starts. It's the violation is greater than fifty.
So they can grade their whole area.
I don't, no, 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 you can't. If you, grading your lot per house is a several problem grading the repairing.
I know that. I'm only talking about the repairing area because this is what this is about. I'm talking, Larry, about if it's a thousand dollars, then anything over what they're allowed to do, they can do the whole repairing area and it's still only a thousand, is that what I'm saying?
That's not an idea. What's, what's an alternative to that?
Make a large number.
Make an higher number?
Yeah.
All right. How about twenty-five hundred for an excavation fine? And a thousand dollars.
We should look up the state. I was disappointed in the state because I think theirs was like ten thousand dollars. But when I called him, he goes, yeah, it didn't sound like anything I'm interested in. So we left the dirt part alone. We just, because the trees were so visible, I mean, so easy. Measuring fifty cubic yards of earth work after the back is hard, but the trees were clear, you know? There used to be one, we had pictures of them. There was one and now it's gone.
That's what I have a little bit of a problem with is you're sitting here stating that you, you called the state and the state's like, yeah, we really don't give a shit, but.
That was on the dirt work.
Not the trees.
So we're, we're gonna go over and above and just kill the citizens.
But I think, we're not killing any citizens. All they gotta do is apply for a permit, but I'm thinking if you exceed the fifty cubic yards, I think it's ten thousand dollar fine from the state. So I'm with Susan. It's a really big deal in the repairing habitat. It affects water quality and erosion and. So. I mean, it can't be a free for all in the repairing habitat. It's precious and, and it's already covered by state law.
Yep. Anyway, I made a motion, I made a motion twenty-five hundred on the excavation, five thousand for the second offense, thousand dollars per tree, five thousand on the second offense and all of that's within twenty-four months.
How much was the repairing?
Twenty-five hundred.
The, I'm sorry, the dirt work, not the trees.
Twenty-five hundred, five thousand on the second offense. The trees are a thousand dollars a tree, five thousand per tree.
For second appearance.
Right, within the repairing area within twenty-four months. That way it's not cheaper for them to come talk to us than it is to just cut it all down and dig it out, call, ask for forgiveness.
All right. Now. How's this on the agenda? It's two pieces, right? Because fines, fines are approved by resolution, but the ordinance will go for a public hearing. So we can, we'll, we can get public comment, but we, this isn't a public hearing item. This is just for council, so. So we have a motion. Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. You make notes here. All those in favor?
I am.
And those opposed?
I'm staying.
Okay. Erna, and then. Chapter thirty-six is right behind it. And this would be potentially our fine review and then we will see this again if there's any minor adjustments in the plan. Because it'll be a public hearing to revise the code enforcement chapter. So I think we've been through this twice, right? This is all of our comments, everything put together, okay? And the pages are not numbered, so.
I'm sorry.
Starting on the first page, that's okay. First page, thirty-six dot zero one zero, the definitions. We have that person responsible. We're being consistent, so we're striking the others. It's just person responsible. Any changes on the first page? Most of the changes on the second page are the titles. We were inconsistent in code enforcement officer, code enforcement person, city administrator, the city staff, so anyway, try to clean all that up. So we added some language here under written complaints, third page. And this was discussed the last time, what, a month or so ago. Certain records related to investigation are confidential because we've had a number of complaints. They immediately wanna follow up, what's the status, what are you gonna do? While it's in an investigation, it's confidential. You're innocent. While it's in an investigation, it's confidential, you're innocent, you're proven guilty, and then the second one is organized by statute, spells out some of that stuff, so anyway... It becomes very public if you're fined and then you appeal to council, then everything becomes public as part of the hearing process.
I'm just still a little bit busy, and I said I was before, about the right to appeal, Clayton does have a right to appeal. My concern is if it comes to the city council, we talked about sending it to the planning commission, what happened to that? They could, if Clayton could appeal to the planning commission, that still puts the city council out of it until there's an actual appeal, should there be an action later. So...
Well, I know the last time this came up, um... Talking to our attorney... It was our ordinance, but our ordinance followed, I believe, followed state law. You appeal to city council because it's not a planning action, and that's the final, so that was... Basically, the recommendation was, you appeal to council, it's, that's the final action at the city's level, and then they have 60 days to seek legal relief from district court.
Okay, but later on, when the person who we put the fine against or has made another violation, wants to appeal to the city council, we've already said it wasn't a violation, but they're appealing to us, that puts us, to me, in double jeopardy.
No. They're being cited by staff.
I know.
So you wouldn't see it until they appealed to council. So that'd be the only time you saw it, is if they appeal, a fine. So you would see it work.
This is having someone who complains about somebody's property coming to the city council, and the city council asks code enforcement to yes, go find them, find them or say something about it, is how I read this.
Oh, I see what you mean, this is for the...
And then when the person who we fine comes back to complain, they will come back to city council and the...
And you would have already had the discussion publicly. I see what you mean. A misunderstanding, you're right, and it is unusual. If someone lodges a complaint and they don't get the answer they like, it's unusual to appeal your complaint.
All I'm saying is, we used to have a citizens' action committee that would, they were kind of zorged into the planning commission because there weren't enough people. We don't have another place to put this.
I got you.
So I'm just wondering, um... I know it's not a planning item, but I'm just trying to...
No, you're right.
The council out of double jeopardy.
Right. Double jeopardy is the wrong word, but it's, um... Yeah, how do you be objective if someone's already pled their side of the case and you've heard all these ugly details?
And we told them to go find them.
And, no, you wouldn't go and find them, you'd say, you're right, that sounds like a viable complaint, it goes back to staff, and then they appeal to you and go, no, it wasn't, and it's like, oh, Eric heard this story again, I see what you mean. Does that make sense to everybody? Just change city council on that one, planning commission?
No, I'm not happy with that either, I think every citizen should have the right to appeal to the council. I read this in really two different ways. Let's say you have a person who is in violation. And staff says, you're in violation, and they say, no, I'm not. Well, then you have the right to appeal to the council.
Yes, they do.
They can appeal to the council, and they present their case, and staff presents their case, and the council says, actually, we don't think you're in violation, so, you know, we're going to obey the accusation, I guess. But then the party that made the original complaint, their neighbor comes in and says, I think you handled that wrong, and here's additional information for you. The council should be able to hear that as well.
In that case, yes, to me, I read this as code enforcement said it wasn't a violation, so the complainant wanted to come and count.
And that would be okay too, if...
Then we would have heard it.
We have to have a way to check, we have to have a way to check the staff, so...
I agree with that, and I'm trying to find a way so it doesn't come to council twice.
Well, the point is, if the staff says it's not a violation, the citizen has to have the right to come to us and say it is a violation, and present their case, and we can decide that, yes, it is a violation. That doesn't remove the ability of the person who's in violation to come back to us again and say, well, you previously ruled that this was a violation, here's some additional context.
Right.
They're like two different matters.
Yeah.
And each has...
And it's two sides to a story.
But each has a right to their appeal. You can't deny...
They do, I'm just trying to make it clear.
But we have to hear both, we cannot hand that off to staff, because if you said, for example, one of these staffs is claiming a complaint. I'm saying, but every citizen should be able to, the buck stops here.
Right, no, I agree, I agree with that.
Without it turning into a trial, could we do the vote at the same time?
No, because they can be six months apart. The first, the first lodges a complaint, we go, no, I don't think, either, we don't have jurisdiction, or we don't see, you know, it doesn't violate an ordinance. And then they go, well, I think it does, they appeal to council, and go, yeah, that was the intent of whatever, you know, we had the discussion about chapter 36 and cut trees, that was our intent. Then you may not see the appeal for six months, you know, then they go back and they...
But if one party appeals, then we can notify the other that that party is appealed, so if you want to come and...
No, I think it's step one, they're saying, I'm making my case, and then it would be for staff to go back and then say, yeah, we cited them for this, and then they say, no, 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 I did hear the permit, I'm appealing to council, and you adhere it again from the other side. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think you can force them to the same meeting, in fact, they need to be separated. One is to decide, you have a valid complaint, the other is, is it valid citation and clear violation of the ordinance? Was it applied properly? So, and I agree with you, Larry, that separating them is a great idea, but you've got a right to appeal to council, we're the elected body. And it's not really within the planning commission's expertise either.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, I think having it separated, because we're supposed to be objective when the resident, final resident comes back to appeal, and if we've already decided on one, I'm not sure then makes us objective on the second.
But we're being decision makers on what's presented to us, if something comes back as an addition, then we have that to go back.
And that's such a good idea, appeal, right? It's more info and...
More info changes.
Right, and you think about it, the Supreme Court's in the same position. They'll decide a case, and one later we...
Because it specifically says you're not supposed to, you're, you can't be, do the one and be the appeal board.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's on the plate for a planning commission to have to do it, because we have elected positions.
I agree.
You're taking a credible, and you're making a decision on basis of facts, such as controlled by the city council.
I understand all that, but I still, I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, 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 it's very common.
No, I'm sorry I brought it up.
But planning commission's specific for land use and zoning.
I know what it's for, I know what it got, the citizens' action committee got zorged into it. I know the history of all that. I'm just saying, this I don't, I feel violates what we're supposed to deal as an appeal board.
So know me. Any other comments on this page? Whatever page it is, three maybe?
I think we're now at 36 oh nine oh.
Oh seven oh?
Oh seven oh, yeah, they did all those strike out. Yeah, all the strikeouts are gone, but I mean...
Okay. Notice violation, and then oh nine oh, that's all struck, that whole section.
Okay, and the next section, 36 oh nine oh, paragraph...
New oh nine oh, yes, fine assessment and lien.
Okay, paragraph E has a typo, first line, whiffing is supposed to whiff in?
Good one. All right. F is never popular, but it's what state law says.
I actually think Lyle, you did a great job of parsing this out from our last meeting.
Yeah, we had a lot of notes.
A lot of changes there, so...
I do have a comment, so we go to 36 point Oito, the notice of violations. It talks about, you know, the notice of violations and there's a letter sent, a corrective action. And they kind of describes, you know, what is, what is in that letter, and then they can appeal if they would like to, right? Based on what the violation is. So what, my question is, is what happens if they don't appeal or don't correct?
Then they're accepting the fine as, and then you follow later, right? If they don't pay the fine, then you can leave the property. If they're silent, they're accepting it.
Is that any meaning or...
I think it is, well, I think it kind of summarizes in the next page, after the sentence is struck, it says, the order for corrective action shall be include a statement if they are required for, having to code may result in the imposition of the fine. Isn't that what you were just mentioning?
Which letter are you reading?
Oh, worship.
Or a number?
Still number two, but it's at the top of the next page.
Oh, gotcha, at the bottom of two, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, if you send it and they're silent, then it's accepted, and so the clock is running, you know, they have a certain time period to appeal.
Right.
And then we, you know, we can then send them another notice and say, hey, we never received your fine or whatever it is, and then you can send them off to collections, and they'll do the same and mark it up, and then we can record a lien. You know, once they have reasonable time to remedy.
Yeah, because we put that, that's in number four.
Right.
Right. Right, they got 30 days to notify us. Yeah. And then it goes to oh nine oh, fine assessment and lien, so at that point, you're found in violation, right? If you don't, if you don't appeal, then it's presumed accepted. So you're in violation, and then all these other steps can occur, including a lien against the property for that fine. And maybe this is the time to discuss it, you know, one of the questions that came up with the lien, the original letter we mailed out 18 months ago now, said, here's your fine, and after such a, you know, 30 days or whatever, we're going to charge 1.5% interest a month. And then when we, we had two different attorneys give us a lien document and say, here's what we recommend, and they were two different interest rates. And there was a question, did you want to charge interest? We always recommend you do because this could take 12 months, it could take 60 months, you know, you never know when you're going to get paid. So we decided to just stick to the number because Jamie had put that in the original letter, 1.5% per month, that's 18% a year. You know, that's credit card rate. One of them said, oh, sometimes we plug in 9%. They were all just like, took a number out of the air, but we could, we could say, we're always going to charge 1% a month or something and plug it in here, if you feel strong in one way or the other. I don't know where the 1.5% came for a month back then, but...
That's fine.
I've seen numbers like that before, I mean, it's not like a loan shark, you know, 7% a month kind of number, but... So anyway, we had three different numbers by the time we were done. Hellcog had one number, the attorney's office had a different number, and then I said, what did the original letter say? Oh, it was 1.5% a month, it was the highest, and like, then let it ride, be consistent. They already got that notice, it's already in somebody's file, so we just stuck to the same number for that one, but if anybody wants to, we could put it right in the ordinance and say, you know...
Well, that's actually just a standard debt collection interest rate.
1.5% a month?
Collection agencies are doing the same thing, they're using it as a tool to motivate people to do it.
And it was the one thing the collection agency said, when they're really ready to make deals, that's the only thing we waive, is, you know, we get our fee, you get your full, and then... That was their suggestion, like, it's only been like six months, we waive interest if that sweetens the deal. That left us at where the 22 grand and... So at this point, if we record it, it's going to be the whole number and it's going to continue to grow, but...
But by putting that person in here does not alleviate someone having to type up a letter, correct?
Oh, no, no.
Did I leave it out because there was a person that just changed?
Yeah, and that's why fees are adopted by resolution, we could probably put it on the fee schedule one, the fines, and say unpaid fines will be, because that's much simpler to... Right, then you could say, well, council reviewed and approved it by resolution, but it's easy to change, that's a one-meeting change.
That's a great idea.
If something came from state law and said, hey, entities can't charge more than 1% a month, they go, okay, it's one meeting, 1%, you know, in compliance with state law, so we could have that at the bottom of the page, that unpaid fines violations will accrue interest at 1.5% from up. We can be consistent and plus that in there.
So you need a motion for that.
Or we can make that motion when we get to the end of 36 and say, add it as an amendment to the chart, I think would be okay. And then this one, remember, we'll see this again for public hearing, but the, but the fine list, we don't have to, that's not a public hearing, we won't see that one.
So question?
Yes.
So, somebody owes us something, we enforce them, they, we give them 90 days.
Yep.
After 90 days, it goes to collection, and when it goes to collection, we add the 20%, right? It's a collection fee that they're going to get. So now we decide to lien the property. So my question is, is that percentage, that 1.5, is really when we take the next step?
Yeah, it doesn't start on day one, it's like at the end of 90 days or whatever, you're, here's your window of pay, it's if you don't...
Or just when we are about to lien the property?
No, I'd do it when the, once you give it to the collection agency.
Yeah, interest should start.
It's the same interest, it's their interest or our interest, it's all, it starts at the 90-day point, it's there in the cure period.
We already upfront charged them 20% to go to the collections agency.
Yes.
Okay?
That's the collection agency.
And that's what, that's what's being collected.
Yeah.
So there's no more interest being charged at that point, because it's already been added on and it's already there.
Is that interest or a fee?
That's, that's their percentage.
Yeah.
So I thought, I thought if we said, here's our interest rate, they would continue to charge interest. Oh, it's, it's flat at that point.
Mm-hmm, it's flat at that point.
Okay.
So they, they give, if the bill's, let's say it's $80, we give it to them as $100, and they start collecting that, but there you're now starting to charge interest on the $100. The collection agency is.
Yeah.
Yes, they are, you just said they were.
No, they're not.
That's what I thought, we were in our letter, yeah.
They're not.
So the collection agency is not adding any interest.
You just told me that they're willing to use their interest as a negotiating tool.
It's their interest.
It's our interest or their interest?
It was our, it was our number that was in there, and that was his recommendation, so I didn't realize it wasn't continuing to add on. That really doesn't make any sense. So if they take five years to pay, you get the same dollar amount from five years ago.
So that's what I'm saying, so that's why I wanted a clarification, so it's at that point that we decide, these people that haven't been, that haven't paid...
Maybe we should just get rid of the collection agency and say, we're just going to charge 1.5%, if I don't hear from you on day 91, I'm going to go report a lien, but continue to accrue interest until you pay it off.
And that's what the old, that's what the current ordinance basically says, yeah.
Well, we didn't have a collection agency. Okay, how often do we send something to collections?
I probably have half a dozen.
And we've only had one contract for like six months.
No, it's been over a year, it's been over a year, it was June of last year.
You're right, it's 13 months now.
I think, because we were investigating how much we've collected, we've collected, I think, about $2,000.
$2,000.
They helped us collect about 20 grand. So, in that last year.
That's still not worth it.
Well, it doesn't cost us anything, they get their 20%, and then we get our full fee, and then relieve staff from having to write in those letters and...
Are they recording on the person's credit rating?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's an advantage, right there.
Right, because we can't do that.
Yeah, because what's going to happen is if that person wants to go get a loan or buy a car, the lender's going to say, no, you can't buy a car until you go take care of this, it has to be a resolved item on your credit report, so that, there's a big advantage.
That does help, that was one of our previous councilmen brought that up, that's sometimes a bigger motivator. a bigger motivator.
But I think there should be a conversation with the collection agency about the fact that, okay, we're presenting this bill, but we want you to start collecting interest and charge it at least, because that one and a half percent doesn't go away. That should stay in place until it's paid. Because.
We can visit that. And that, that wouldn't be here, but yeah, we could visit that. And it's been a year, right?
Yeah, it's been over a year. And we also.
We can negotiate terms.
The contract says they can do liens, they refuse to do liens.
Yeah.
So it's, who's in charge? Are they in charge and tell us when we can do a lien? Or are we in charge?
I think we're in charge, but we can do the lien too.
Yeah, but if we're paying them for a service, then they need to do it, because we're the.
Well, that's an extra part, the recording fees and all that are extra, either way.
And they add on to the violation.
Yeah.
I, I get it. I get it, but there's logic with the agency. We're not willing to perform a fine somewhere else.
Exactly. We're the, we're the consumer and it needs to be what we want.
When they tell us no twice to do a lien, and Lila has to go do it. I think there's a reason to look at that.
Oh, yeah, right. So we're good stating the interest rate in the fee schedule and then we'll figure out why it doesn't go forward with the collection agency. And then none of those terms have to be in here. All right. I think we're at thirty-six O nine O?
We just completed that one.
Past O nine O, right? Yeah, we finished O nine O. We didn't have any.
Those are just strikeouts.
We had a strikeout at the bottom. We had a strikeout. I think everything else is just cleanup stuff, not, not a change to the, to the code. So with those adjustments, is everybody good? Anybody want to make a motion to approve, to set out for public hearing with minor revisions? So move. Thank you, Chris. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll put Larry seconded it, so Melissa gets the vote first. That, all those in favor?
It doesn't matter.
All those opposed. Okay, that's okay. That's fine.
I can't, I can't. I'll put the article that says you can't do that, so.
Okay. So Susan is opposed and we'll, yeah, if you have more data, we'll, we'll take a look at the appeal process again. Next item, citizens' input. Did you have anything else, Ms. Jackson?
I was interested and I still have a concern about that. I might point out that Councilman Wells is correct. I, I think you're going through some expense and a lot of effort for something that's probably going to fail.
Which, oh, the ballot initiative?
Ah.
Well, we're trying to avoid expense, but I appreciate your comment. It won't cost us anything if the county has a ballot initiative that they have to mail out, then ours becomes free. So.
Yeah, in the past, you guys have not done it because I think, because there wasn't an election at the time.
Right. And that's something we're tracking is what, when will there be a general and when will they have a, a full publication? Because that, it will be free for us if they do and.
What I'm hearing is the same thing as Councilman Wells, is that people are wondering, why is this so necessary? Why would you avoid this? They can't, this is not that complex. And you do, you are leaving the door open to some bad things.
That door's already open.
Yeah, I know. I heard what you said.
I mean, if I had a special interest.
But let's don't facilitate it. That's my complaint.
Any, any interest group that backs a certain candidate can easily get twenty signatures, right? A motivated Boy Scout troop could get to every household in this community in a week. So it's not opening the door to anything. It's, it's A, complying with state law for consistency and the county, pretty much, basically, we're jumping on the bandwagon because everybody does it. And B, we just had an election that had two vacant spots. So we want to make it as easy as possible to get people at least on the ballot. My goal would be to have four people for three spaces, so you at least have a contest.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I kind of figured that was the, the situation, to make things easier. But we do have a very special place here and.
That won't change. That's not the goal, to change that.
And there's, well, I go to the planning meetings too. There is an acceleration of development and they talk about, about building more pieces of, more buildings on, on property. So a lot of changes that, that do, that could end up in conflict with the, with the environment. I, I've got hours and hours in just this last week or so looking at research and, and things that have been written about the city and regarding, regarding growth and development. And a lot of, really bad things could happen real fast if, if we're not, if we're not giving, if we're not doing the best we can. So I understand both sides of what you're saying, but I think that there really is, the fact that the state doesn't require twenty signatures doesn't mean that, that a space, a place.
No, the state allows that.
As unusual as we are, couldn't and shouldn't do it.
The state allows ten percent of the participants in the last election for a fee. They recognize, well, we have only one.
Well, if you were to ask.
And so ours ended up fixing that.
If you were to ask me, I say, charge a fee, but keep the twenty. And that's really all I have to say, because you guys have talked back and forth and you have voted and I heard it.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Real quick, we're to go to the order. I want to go first because I have a reminder. So specific to ballot initiatives, and there may, there's talk on the street about another one that would come from some residents. Remember, ballot initiative is by the people. So you can have a city initiative, but once we approved our initiative, no staff time, we don't advertise, we don't market, we don't advocate, we don't spend any city resources or staff time on anyone's ballot initiative. So if we get a question, the staff doesn't put together a report on pros and cons, the person that proposes it, you know, so if we see another one, having said that, all of the council or residents, you have First Amendment right to talk about anything you want as you. And you can tell people, you know, I'm on the city council and I hate it or I love it, but don't do it here. Don't do it at the dais. We're not going to choose sides or have a debate or anything on ballot initiatives. There's a publication from the, from the state or from ElCog, I think it's from the state, right? That outlines all that. We can get copies if anybody wants. And there's also one on putting them together. I prepared that. There's an inquiry about what do I have to do if I wanted to prepare one and, you know, ball's in their court, the cost, the legal review, the whole bit has to be theirs, not ours. So, so remember that. But you can express your opinion. We just won't have any debates or anything and we won't put it on the agenda. We won't prepare backup or, or handouts for anybody. As far as that goes. And then you have a serial communication handout. We got a newsletter from League of Cities and they said, if you went to our most recent ethics training, we made a mistake. So I don't know if anybody went to their last training. I think it was online. They had misstated, they had some bad information about serial communication, which would be basically an illegal meeting that happens one councilman at a time, right? Larry calls Chris, Chris calls Rich, Rich calls me, I call Susan, you call Melissa. And then outside the meeting, we all go, yeah, that's what we're going to do. And they said, you could do that with an intermediate, intermediary or the press, which is shocking, that you could all be interviewed by a member of the press individually and then basically, you know, tell everybody how you were going to vote. So anyway, they, they said, we made a huge mistake. It was a big mistake. So they published this quick guideline and put it in their newsletter and it's six pages. I apologize, it's for their short form. It's not very short, but, but the words are big. So this is just a reminder. Nobody here did anything wrong. I just thought, just in case word came around from that training, they really watched that.
That's the open meeting law.
Well, yeah, it goes with open meeting law, right? If we're going to deliberate, and that's why I'm a stickler for it needs to be on the agenda if we're going to discuss the specifics, because we can't act on anything we don't put on agenda and post publicly. So, yeah, so anyway, short form, you know, feel like reading it. And Melissa asked, no one here did anything wrong. This wasn't, this, we didn't get this from the state because we did something wrong. I printed this because I couldn't believe what a blunder they made in the training.
We don't want to make a reference.
You just gotta be careful whose ethics seminar you go to, definitely. So that's all I have. Let's start down to Duke. You got anything else for us?
I just say, I think the amendments that we're putting forward on the subject are going to work.
All right.
I'm happy with them. I wish we weren't involved as much as we are, but I understand we have to be.
I understand.
And, but I think, the people that I've talked to, I think this is going to work, you know, by the volume of solids. I think that's the right way to go.
Right. Thank you. All right. Melissa, you got it? Susan? Rich?
Again, a lot of people complaining about Clearlake and, and the amount of speeding that goes on.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to persuade the county to reduce the speed limit. I don't know what the process would be, if it's a petition or what the case might be. But if you look at Clearlake, ninety percent of that road is housing and there's driveways on it.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it really truly warrants a forty or forty-five mile an hour speed.
I agree.
And so, you know, the, the county really doesn't seem to much care.
Correct.
So I don't know if this is something that we, we, we could address as a council or if we have to petition or what.
I could ask them. I mean, we asked a year ago. I brought it up and they said, we did speed spot study and the numbers worked out. So they were satisfied. You're right. They don't come out here much and I don't think they hear much.
And I think.
If I said, yeah, you're, so what? We'd like to see it posted at thirty.
But I think the speed spot deal fits what they have it posted for as far as what they're saving.
Which satisfied their traffic engineer, right?
Yeah, the traffic engineer. But in all reality, if you look at it and the amount of houses is there and the driveways and stuff, it really is, and, and the amount of people would walk on that road.
That's what matters. When you go through the.
Deer.
The deer don't matter when the analysis, well, conflicts are what you measure. So from a, from a traffic perspective, you measure conflicts. It's people, you know, it's pedestrians, bikes, crossings, school bus stops. Wild animals are sort of an aside, but we have one resident that keeps posting on the neighborhood Facebook, you know, that he's asked the city to put deer crossing on Clearlake. Well, it's a county road and the deer don't read. So they never cross at the right spot. But I can go back because I, I still have those emails from the traffic engineer and the public works director and say, you know, it's just, it's a bone of contention. Is there anything we can do? And see what he says. And if he says, boy, if we had a petition from, you know, a hundred residents, we'd look into it. We could also go to our county commissioner. And none of them live around here. I mean, our county commissioner is sixty miles away as well, but he's sensitive to, you know, rural western lane counties. So.
I mean, personally, I, I just don't.
I mean, there's six hundred votes here, right?
I just don't drive that road. More than thirty-five myself.
I do the same thing. I've been passed a couple of times by goobers with, you know, they're in some big area, go nowhere, but.
Well, how about, I mean, if, if we're unanimous in asking you to talk to them and reduce the speed limit, you can at least say, our city council are unanimous that we'd like to see the speed limit reduced.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not asking for a vote, but I, I understand your angst and, and I think we're all in a res, I mean, we're all residents, right? I know the same thing. I ride it on my bike and drive it. I do the same on my bike third bike.
And how about Canary too? I mean, it's.
Canary is forty. It's a little slower, but yeah, there's no shoulders. I mean.
And there's kids fishing on the bridge and.
Oh, yeah. Lots of people back there. Dogs and, yeah. So I share that. I'll, I'll bring it up again.
Do you mind if I make a comment?
Yeah. Because let me finish with the council.
Okay.
Chris, I have one.
Larry?
Thank you, Mayor, for helping me address the trees that, the tree service is doing a great job clearing to protect the phone line or the power lines. But they're leaving trees that are cut off halfway.
Yeah, we're going to follow up with it.
So I sent pictures to the mayor. He's going to follow up with Central Lincoln on that. The other thing I was going to suggest is that when we're sending out water bills or anything like that, if we can put something in every mailing that encourages people to give us their email so they can participate in our Dune City newsletter, I wonder what the, what level of exposure we're getting off the emails to people. Because I get people asking me all the time, questions that, well, I guess you're not reading the Dune, Dune City newsletter. It's, there's good information. There's a very good information tool and Susan did a good job with it this past time. So if, if, in every communication, if we're sending out a water bill or we're sending out anything, you know, somebody comes in for a planning document or a permit, let's, hey, you know, if we signed you up for our newsletter and get more information flow.
Yeah, correct.
That'd be a good suggestion. That's all I have.
All right. And we're past citizens' input, but go ahead.
I didn't, I was just, I wanted to add to what you were talking about. At the time I didn't meet the, ever meet the council. I, I'm hoping that you do this, that you, that you do contact the, the governmental agencies that have to do, do with speeds. I, the only reason that it's forty-five in the area, that it's forty-five in this area is because there were, there was a death there. Somebody was stopped trying to make a left-hand turn and they, and I think their child, and this was twenty, thirty or forty years ago. We don't want someone to die in order to make this happen. So, yeah, please move forward with this.
It's, it's, the county calls it an arterial, you know, it's a functional classification and it goes with how they report lane miles and allocate gas tax too. But they can call it a arterial and post it at thirty because there's driveways and houses affronting. So I did this for a living. I mean, you look at how many people cross the road, how many pedestrians you have. And, and where I came from, we would never post a road at forty-five with houses affronting, ever. So I would chalk to. And what's really interesting, if you use Google Maps, it says it's a twenty-five mile an hour street. So somebody's told Google more than once, because they changed it, when I turn off, you know, when I turn a Boy Scout, it says twenty-five, even though I know it's forty-five. So for what it's worth. But yeah, we can follow up with them again and see what happens. And, and last time, I just emailed the public works director. He said, let me put you in touch with the traffic engineer. I'll add Ryan to the list and say, the residents hate it. I mean, it was one of the items in our survey. It was one of the common items was speed. And it's not even speeding, because they said, well, yeah, we measured it. It averages like forty-eight miles an hour going one way and forty-four the other. That is not comfortable for pedestrians. And they're not wide streets. I mean, it's not like you have ten foot shoulder. You're sharing that with the cars and the trucks, so.
And not only that, if you have mailboxes on opposite side, there was a comment on social media today that, you know, being in a wheelchair trying to cross.
I saw that, yeah. Was he going to the mailbox? Is that why he was crossing? Yeah, I almost put a comment and I thought I almost put it out there publicly, but you, you take your bowling ball and you go to the mailbox and somebody speeds, you just let that slip out of your hands and wave and go, sorry, I dropped my bowling ball.
It's just as being.
You only hit a bowling ball once.
We are an aging community. We need to be aware of.
We are. And, no, for sure. Well, and it's just as bad if we had a whole bunch of kids. You don't want a bunch of seven-year-olds that were, you know, waiting for the bus or something.
Well, I did that because they don't stop at the stop sign down here going to the post office or, or boats coming through. Well, they came and sat on the corner, so they're visible to everybody. And of course, everybody stopped then, because they saw them sitting there.
Yeah. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Anybody want to keep going?
All right, we're adjourned to eight eleven.